I'd like to call the order, the committee, the whole meeting for June 11th, 2024. First order of business tonight is roll call.
Araza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Kiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Okay. So Chanset's here. Lehman.
I'm in route.
Lacy.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer. Sarum. Vocal singer.
11 of 14, and Dan said he is in route. He'll be here. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of, or I'm sorry, reminder to speak directly into the microphone. If you come up tonight, you only need to give us your name for the record and then adjust the mic so that we can hear you and you can hear yourself in the background. Item number three on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes for April 1st, 2024, COW special meeting, May 14th, 2024, May 20th, 2024, COW special meeting. Any corrections or anything anybody noted on those? If not, a motion to recommend to council. Second.
He's a motion. I'll do a, oh, I saw you said you motioned.
Yeah, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Zolva, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. Next up would be item four, which is items to be removed, edited, or changed. Are there anything on the agenda tonight? Okay. Move right on then to item number five for matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody here in the audience for anything not on the agenda? Come on up and use the microphone.
I think Kifer, I don't see on the agenda about removing the gates on Wagner Road. It was supposed to be discussed tonight.
That was put on, that was mentioned in the summary of the agenda on Facebook on accident. It had been on a previous version of the agenda, but not the final agenda. So the one that's posted online does not have that item on the agenda. The current status of that is that Mayor Shilke has sent a letter to Mayor Irvin asking for the gate to be removed. And so at this point, we are waiting for a response from the city of Aurora.
Are they just going to remove it? I mean, they're not going to have people talk about it. Why, I'd like to know why it's being removed. I live in that subdivision. I'd just like to know why they're opening up the gates to have people come in and out of our subdivision.
Because right now, in order to come down that street, it directs all traffic through the city of Batavia to come in on the north side of Wagner Road in order to enter that subdivision. And as has been discussed by our city council, we think that that puts an unfair burden on the streets of the city of Batavia.
So you want people to come through those gates zigzag all the way around and get through, and you got kids riding bikes? And it's been a safe subdivision right now. I mean, I've seen people living in vans. I've seen car racons up and down that block. And now you're just opening up the gates and letting people come in. You got the casino going up soon. You're gonna have more people late at night. And now you're just opening up our subdivision to people walking in, driving in.
Or so it's for the connectivity to what is south of that, from the neighborhoods from the north. You force everybody out onto Kirk Road or a back road.
But we have to go on Kirk Road, too. I mean, it's easy for us to go straight out, but we go backtrack around just because we don't want so much traffic coming through our little subdivision. You're opening up, our subdivision's small. You're opening up to a huge amount of traffic coming through there. People late at night unwanted. We have enough problems with crime as it is. Never mind opening up our gates and let more criminals come through. But I'd like to know, are you going to just do that? Are you going to let the public come and have a say in this?
Everything that we've discussed has been in an open meeting.
Okay. So you're gonna list this, that we're able to come to a meeting before the gates are removed?
Right. That will go on to an agenda at some point in the future when we get a response back from Aurora.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else for anything not on the agenda? Come on up.
Hello there. My name's Brian Schutte. Maybe in the similar sort of boat. It was my understanding that there was going to be kind of an update to Skyline Drive this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, it's under project status.
Okay, perfect. It was from that same idea that I wanted to stand up and address the council with just a few of the issues, speak on behalf of the Citizens Committee, Skyline Drive Citizens Committee. A few of the members are here tonight. I'd just like to say a few words about three topics that we've sort of noticed as we've been going through this process. The first is an opinion that we've heard echoed from the council a few times, which is the idea that everybody likes connectivity, just not in their neighborhood. Right? And the first part about that that I would like to address is the connectivity that currently exists along Skyline Drive is just excluding vehicle traffic. There is connectivity there, and you've heard this before, for pedestrian and cyclists. So the idea that it is excluding part of the neighborhood is not true. To further back that up with the petition work that we did, it showed that almost nine to one, the residents were in favor of the connectivity that currently exists. And of that nine to one, the majority of those individuals were from the Batavia 7th Ward themselves. So to give you an idea of that, the other thing about the "not in my neighborhood" argument, and I know you hear it a lot, is in this case, that sort of assertion is dismissive of the project's potential negative impact, given the infrastructure from Spring Green. It's 50-year-old infrastructure. The other thing about that is it contradicts the objective professional view of both the Geneva Township Roads Commissioner and Kane County Sheriff. So that's something to keep in mind with the idea that these people are just angry because it's in their neck of the woods. That's objectively incorrect. The second thing I would like to talk about is just a brief summary of the timeline of events from the residents' perspective. You were given kind of a summary from Rahab Bari before. From the residents' perspective, here's how we see a timeline. In 2022, the city of Batavia completed the survey work on the right-of-way within Spring Green. There was no intergovernmental or residential communication about a potential project at that time. It was just survey work. In 2023, city of Batavia proceeded to annex that right-of-the-way while supplying the legal minimum communication to the intergovernmental bodies. Once again, no residents were involved in a discussion of a potential project. In 2024, project funding was approved. No residents received notice of any sort of property staking. And city of Batavia designated mailing areas were inadequate, given the scope and impact of the project. I tell you all of this not to rub Batavia's nose in it or say, shame on you. What I do is to say this simply for the fact of, the net result is that residents were given less than two months to inform themselves and the entire neighborhood, organize, research a project that city of Batavia had been pursuing for over two years. So that was the onus put on us, to be able to approach you and say, we're still in a win-win situation. You have budgeted money, but you haven't spent it. Let's work together and figure out a solution. Part of that as well is limiting the involvement of intergovernmental bodies and neighborhood residents in the early stages of the project, directly conflicts with the policies outlined by the City of Batavia Comprehensive Plan. And much in the same way that there can be reasons for doing things that directly go to the strategic plan or comprehensive plan, you should look at it to reinforce what should not be done in situations as well. And in looking into it, that was the one thing that became evident to us in the Citizens Committee. I'd like to supply to the council, a few of the Citizens Committee members have a handout for you. It's a letter, it's a summary letter written by Geneva Township's attorney, Mary Dixon. And it was a letter that's on public record now, but it was given to the state's attorney, outlining a brief, accurate history of the error. And it was written prior to any current litigation that is happening. The thing to note there is you have two pages. The bottom paragraph, second paragraph of your first page, and the first paragraph of the second page, just give you a brief kind of objective history. It isn't something that the residents have written. It was something introduced in that way. The third thing I'd like to just bring to the committee's attention, the committee and most residents, the summary for us seems to be that this is a project that is a solution in search of a problem. The discussed issues of any sort of traffic congestion within the area and any sort of neighborhood connectivity are both currently being addressed by KDOT at Wenmuth and Fabian. They now do have the actual traffic signals there, wire traffic signals. They're waiting to hook them up. And that project is going to continue through 2026 in terms of more infrastructure changes onto Fabian. In terms of connectivity, of course, Branson Drive connecting Mill Street, Fabian, and McKee. Both of those projects are ongoing, and they'll be completed soon. That was about all I had for you guys tonight, but with it kind of being, you know, top of the mind again and another chance to look at the issue, the committee just wanted to assert a few of those things to the council and, of course, open the floor for any sort of discussion if anybody has any comments or questions.
Do you have any questions or comments? I'll read this and then, you know, we're gonna move on this at some point and we'll have another discussion on it. It'll be an agenda item and we'll actually have a discussion about it.
Quickly.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. Once again, we're at your disposal if you're interested in talking with us at all. We'll be right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, are you able to read that for us tonight?
I am. I am. Yes. The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 24-89-R, that is renewing a contract with Andy Frain Crossing Guard Services. Resolution 24-93-R, that's approving a contract with Geneva Construction Company. This is for South Harrison Street and South Jackson Street, amount not to exceed $52,899. Dan, we're having real trouble hearing you.
It maybe have.
Yep. Dan, can you hear me?
Yep. Can you hear me now?
You want to try it again or you want Abby to read it?
Where did it leave off?
We lost you in the middle, the first one.
Right after Andy Frain.
Resolution 24-93-R, approving a contract with the Geneva Construction Company, being a sidewalk along Garfield Avenue between South Harrison Street and South Jackson Street, for a amount not to exceed $52,899. Resolution 92, or 24-92-R, accepting a public improvement at 470 North Randall Road. And resolution 24-80-R, approval of the new human resource management software. I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Again.
Motion by Chanset, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Motion carries. I'll go on to council. All right. Up next is item seven, presentation, city of Batavia Annual Comprehensive Report and Board Communication by Brian LaFever, partner at Sikich LLC.
Well, good evening. On behalf of Sikich, I'd like to thank the committee for inviting us to present some brief comments on the report resulting from the audit of the city for your year ended December 31st, 2023. What you have before you is the annual comprehensive financial report, and it's in three sections, an introductory, a financial, and a statistical section. What's in the financial section is what's required under Illinois compiled statutes for an audit of the city. What makes it a comprehensive report is the introductory and statistical section. Within the introductory section is the award that the city received for its 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is considered to be the highest level of financial reporting within the local government industry. And in addition, the city has received this award now for 16 consecutive years, so should all be commended for that. Within the financial section of the report are the opinion we've given on the financial statements, which is what you engage us to do when you engage Sikich to be your auditor. In order for us to give an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to follow two sets of standards. The first set of standards are the auditing standards, and those come from the AICPA, the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants. And those standards tell us the types of procedures we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. The second set of standards are the financial reporting standards, and those come from GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And GASB sets the rules for financial statements for local governments such as the city. So once we follow those two sets of standards, we can then give our opinion. We're pleased to present what's called an unmodified or clean audit opinion. And what that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that can receive on your financial statements. In addition to the documents that you have in your agenda this evening, there were also reports issued for each of your three TIF districts, where we've given an unmodified or clean audit opinion on your compliance with TIF laws and regulations as required by, and that audit is required by the state comptroller's office. There's an additional opinion that's included in the report this year, and this relates to the city's expenditures of federal funds. During the year, the city expended over $7.2 million in federal expenditures, and the majority of those expenditures related to your IEPA clean water and drinking water programs. So this particular report that's included in the comprehensive report is the unmodified opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations that could have a material impact on the financial statements. In addition, we did not note any material weaknesses in your internal controls over financial reporting. So more good news there. In that separate single audit report, we're also required to test what's called major programs, so the significant dollars of those federal expenditures. So therefore, those IEPA programs were tested, and we had no findings or question costs on those major programs. The city then will upload a document to the federal government to be in full compliance with the Federal Single Audit Act. Just past the opinions that I just reviewed is the management's discussion and analysis. This is the executive summary of the report. I realize it's a lengthy report. If you do not have time to read the entire report, start with the MDNA. It's prepared by the city. It compares 2023 with 2022, is required by GASB, and then we review the report to make sure that it's consistent with the financial statements and those GASB standards. This document, in my opinion, along with your annual budget document, is, are excellent documents for your constituents that have an interest in the financial position of the city. Allergies are sure a treat this time of year. Within the financial statements themselves, you'll find the operating statement of the main operating fund of the city, the general fund. And just to give you the highlights of the results, revenues over expenditures were just over $7 million. You had certain required transfers for debt payments and those kinds of things, and also for capital projects. So overall, you had an increase in your fund balance in the general fund of $3,845,000. What does that tell you? That tells you that you're structurally in balance. You can afford to provide the services that you're providing with the revenue streams coming into your general fund. The information related to the city's participation in your three pension plans, the IMREF plan, police pension, and fire pension, are all included in a section of the report called Required Supplementary Information. It's hard copy pages 74 through 82, so it's going to be back in the early hundreds on this electronic version. To summarize what you'll find in that information, the city has continued to fund each of those pension plans with the actuarially recommended contribution, and you'll see that for a 10-year schedule. And also, the markets did well in 2023, so the funding percentages of all the plans increased as well. Those are what I'd consider to be the highlights of the report. In conclusion, the audit went smoothly, and we received all of the information that we needed to complete the audit on a timely basis. One observation and thing, item you'll see in the board communication is that there were no auditor adjusted adjustments to the financial statements, which is very unusual in a municipality your size. So your organization should be commended for that, particularly the finance department that leads the audit, and Peggy Colby, who's really our point person that we work with. All the city staff, we work with all of you, and you're all very professional, and the council needs to understand that, very good professional relationship and all, easy to work with. With that, I turn it over to you and to see if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I like the fact that you only have to come here and tell us this once a year, and we don't ever have to see it on the news.
Because there's way too much of that going on right now.
There certainly is.
It's nice to see a clean report and nothing adjusted. Jen?
I just have one comment. Is there any possibility down the road that the documents that you send to the council members could become electronic, or is there too much of a risk for us to complete those? No, I mean, what we have to fill out.
Oh.
Because I always get a big package.
Risk assessments that come to you all, absolutely, we can email those to you. That's no problem at all.
Great idea. Didn't think of that. Thanks. One more way to get rid of.
Saves you a stamp and saves the printing.
Absolutely, we can do that. That's, there's no issue with doing that at all.
We don't want to put printers on a business necessarily. You know, I mean, but I understand the concept, yeah.
You?
Dan has his hand up.
Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Not as much a question, but more of a comment. I've chaired this committee that is responsible for a budget for a few years here now. I've been on council 14 years now. I believe since we've been here, we've won an award for clean audits. It is nothing short of exemplary, the work that is done by our finance department. Peggy has undertaken this task without the benefit of the latest software for much of her career, and has an impeccable record of proper stewardship of our dollars, at the same time when we have one of the lowest tax rates in the region or in northern Illinois. She does the work that private equity funds would hire a fund manager for to manage our investment portfolio, and has outperformed all of those people that I'm aware of. We are in such a good position, and I cannot stress enough how proud I am of the work that she does and how happy I am that we're in this position to receive this report yet again. It will never be boring for me to hear a report like this, because it speaks so well to the professionalism we have here. And we should be so blessed. I've served as a technical advisor to newspaper reporters on the other side of this type of report. And again, we should, we should be so proud. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, Peggy, for all the work that you do.
Since Peggy is not on a mic right now, Dan, I will say thank you on her behalf and reiterate all of those words. Very well said. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments? Thank you again.
Thank you very much. We enjoy working with the city.
Thank you.
Do we? Thank you, Brian.
We'll move on to item eight, which is Resolution 2024-087-R, authorizing a contract with debt book subscription software for budget amendment for debt book. Now Peggy has a mic.
Now I do. Thank you. This comes at a very good time, and the timing of things, because I'm asking you to pay for some software.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't do that on purpose or anything.
But this software would manage all of our debt in one place, take it off of spreadsheets. And I'm thinking more towards the future, because I will be retiring in a few years, and a new finance director would much rather come in and use software than try and make sense out of spreadsheets. And it just will make it much easier to have all of it in one place. And then it also will give us the entries for GASB 87 and GASB 96, which will be very beneficial to use it for that. The software, they wanted $21,000. I tucked them down to 10, pretty easily, honestly. I should have asked for eight, but. So they guaranteed that price for two years, and then, you know, after we've used it, we could evaluate. But they said that, I told them, we wouldn't pay $21,000 for it. It wasn't worth it for that. But that'll be something down the road that we could address at that time. And because this is new, I hadn't planned for it in the budget, we would need a budget amendment if you would approve it.
Anybody have any questions for Peggy? Jen?
How does it, does it kind of speak with our regular, everyday software, financial software?
No, it wouldn't do the entries automatically into our financial software. It just would provide year-end entries for debt that we, it just would put it out in a nice spreadsheet for us to do the entries in. And we can do charts and graphs of the outstanding debt at the touch of a button, instead of having to put the information into the spreadsheets together and then create the charts.
Okay. So it's the software that you would have to input the data in order to get that, then?
Right.
So it's not integrated?
Right. They're going to do the implementation of all of our outstanding bonds and loans that we have now. And then if we issue any new debt, then I would enter that into, it'd be a one-time entry into the system.
And that kind of leads into my question. What are the, what's entailed in the implementation in terms of implementation costs that's factored in? So what goes into implementation? What is that?
That is entering all of our debt issues, amortization schedules, our refundings that we've done in the past, because even though you do a refunding, it still exists until the bonds are paid. And then we also, they'll be entering all of our leases and all of our software subscriptions. One of the items in the audit was past adjustment, meaning that we didn't have to book software subscriptions this year. But the way I see things going in the future, we probably are going to have to book them at a future year, because practically all software now is a subscription-based. So, and so that implementation cost was, I think it was 2,000 or maybe, it was split between the debt and the leases and subscriptions. It was a couple thousand for each one.
And this will go on the regular agenda with a budget amendment first. Do I have a motion to recommend this to council? I'll move. Motion by Malley, second by Lehman. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item nine, which is ordinance 2024-47, principal structure setback at 721 Viking Drive. Good evening.
All right. Adam and Tracy Carlson are the applicants. On June 5, the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals conducted a public hearing for the property located at 721 Viking Drive to consider a request for the following four variances from table 2.104 of the City of Batavia zoning code Title 10. The first request is to allow the replacement of an existing deck to allow an interior side setback of seven feet instead of the required 12 feet, a variance of approximately five feet. The second request is to allow the existing footprint of the home to have an interior side setback for the northern property line at its closest point of approximately 7.51 feet instead of the required 12 feet, a variance of approximately 4.49 feet. A variance to allow the existing footprint of the home to have an interior side setback for the southern property line at its closest point of approximately 9.61 feet instead of the required setback of 12 feet, a variance approximately 2.39 feet. And to allow the existing footprint of the home to have a front setback at its closest point of approximately 29.03 feet instead of the required setback of 30 feet, a variance of approximately 0.97 feet. For the background on this project, the Carlsons in late 2023 submitted a building permit to replace one of their two decks. That deck has been, was determined to be unsafe and required complete replacement per their consultant. And previous inspections on the other deck noted that there was code issues with this deck, which drove the Carlsons ultimately to get the work done. When we were reviewing the building permit that was submitted, it was determined that the existing home and deck were not compliant with the principal structure setbacks for the zoning code. Staff and research, researching the property, discovered that the Brenton Manor subdivision granted through an annexation agreement in 1975 granted zoning relief, and this included setbacks. In that annexation agreement, it allowed for a seven and a half foot side setback, and was never formally adopted, or there never formally granted zoning relief at that time through a plan development or variance. It was the intention of staff at that time to grant this in perpetuity. However, annexation agreements per Illinois state law expire after 20 years. So in 1995, that zoning relief was no longer existent. The previous zoning code from the 1971 code had a side setback of 12 feet, and today we have a side setback of 12 feet. Staff has been supportive of this request by the applicants, as it was originally intended to grant the relief. The house and the neighborhood were designed in a way where they were built at seven and a half feet from the property line, and surrounding neighbors were as well. Again, if we were to bring this through the development process today, that subdivision would have had a planned development similar to what the council granted for Winding Creek, as well as Ashton Ridge for the Pulte subdivisions. I think one important thing to note with the proposed deck is that there is a door on the rear of the home that is their only point of ingress and egress to the rear of the house. This is an elevated deck. That door is approximately eight feet from the property line, so there's about a foot between the actual wall of the house and this door. In order to have a door, you know, have an exit out of that home and have their deck replaced, it does need to have space, you know, on both sides, you know, for, to meet the building code. What they're asking for is to be at its closest 0.7 feet, which is half a foot closer than what the annexation agreement did allow for. But that purpose of that is so that they can go out in a depth on the rear setback towards the rear of the property that would be consistent with the other deck that is on the property that holds the stairs down. If I pull this up, Laura, if you don't mind, give me, just control the screen real quick. I can show the design. So one thing to note that, you know, with the survey, the lot isn't a true rectangle, so that does affect how the house and the deck were oriented. So as it goes further, that property line does get closer, noting that they are at the closest point, proposing to be seven feet. This would tie into the existing deck and stairs. The door to the exit of the home on that is approximately right here. The deck that exists is about here, so they're asking to go out about an additional two or three feet. In review from our building department, they determined that the contractor was correct in that it would assist in designing the deck with the weight bearings and being code compliant if they were to be uniform, using the supports that already exist. And in the pack, it was provided what this would look like. Again, here is the exit to the house. This is again an elevated, elevated deck. So in order to get outside of their house, they do need this exit. And again, staff is supportive of this. There was one requested condition of approval that was placed in the draft ordinance 2024-047, and that is that the variance shall not expire until after a nine-month period from the city council approval, rather than the six-month specified in 5.507 of the zoning code. The reason for this request is that the applicants are working with a contractor named Architect of Chicagoland, and in order to fit them in the schedule, you know, they were unsure when this would be, if the city council were to approve this, when that would work for them. So if staff wants to accommodate that and allow flexibility in scheduling the contractor, do work if the city council does grant approval. The Plan Commission did approve this by a vote of five to zero. Two were absent, and they were supportive of the applicant's request and found that it did meet the findings required for a variance. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, the applicants are here as well.
Anybody have any questions?
I think this was one of the easier ones I think we've had in a while. To me, it just makes sense, especially with that being the only entrance or exit from the house in the back.
There's not a lot of wiggle there.
Right, there's not much room. And I don't think, looking at it in Google, it doesn't look like there's much of an issue with a neighbor or anything else. I think that'd be fine. All right, there's no other comments. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2024-47, variances for principal structure setbacks, 721 Viking Drive. Adam and Tracy Carlson, applicants. Motion by Wolf, second by Baron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that'll be on our next city council agenda, and we'll do that with the nine-month extension on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right up next is item 10, which is Resolution 2024-90-R, awarding a facade improvement grant for Everdine's Grilled Cheese at 227 West Wilson Street in the amount not to exceed $5,000. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Alderman Wolf and council. I stand up here with a smile because I know how hard the owners of Everdine's Grilled Cheese has worked to establish their base here in Batavia. They've been hard at work. They've run into many challenges, acquiring a former hot pan building, unexpected surprises, understood projects that need to be done. But they've been resilient the entire process. I'm well aware that the community has been very excited, highly anticipating the project, and they're working. They're working, and they're so happy to be here. And I want to say, first off, thank you for the support that you all have provided to this business that currently has their established location, very successful at that, in the downtown Naperville. They decided that they wanted to bring their second location to Naperville, to Batavia from Naperville. So they have now two locations, Naperville and Batavia, Illinois. And I couldn't be more proud to have a business that has decided to look at Batavia and all the great qualities that we have available here. Brian and Kelly both indicated that they are excited to get started with Batavia, get involved with the community. They appreciate the downtown, and most importantly, they're looking to put smiles on everybody's faces who tries their grilled cheese for the first time. Today, Everdine's Grilled Treat Cheese was able to acquire three opportunities for three different grants. And as you mentioned, Alderman Wolf, one of those grants was the facade improvement grant. The location in which Everdine's will be operating out of is 227 West Wilson Street. Many of you may know that as the former hot pan space. And many of you are probably aware that that is a space that needed plenty of work and improvements. And Everdine's is doing just that. They want to bring quality, family, and opportunities for growth and development and our involvement in the community. With this facade grant, we're going to basically be replacing the old facade and putting new siding, particularly the front, which is for this grant, but they're going to do it for the entire building. This grant is going to be up to $5,000, and they are looking to acquire the $5,000 total for the grant. We're looking for a recommendation from city council to approve Resolution 24-090-R, which is awarding a facade improvement grant to Everdine's Grilled Cheese in an amount of $5,000.
What do you have any questions about this one? Other than when we're going to be open and when we get to trying it? Your honor?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I believe I was the first person that the owners came and talked to when they were wanting to do this. And we had quite an in-depth conversation because there was a lot of issues in that block. You had some of the original water system of the city of Batavia that has to be, had, I guess it's now has been replaced or is going to be replaced. We had some lot line issues that were very unique in downtown Batavia. And there was several businesses that shared driveways off of different streets. Then we had the Methodist Church, which was undergoing quite a bit of expansion and reconfiguration of themselves. So I was afraid these folks were going to take a run on us when they heard all, but they stayed with us. And I just want to encourage that we approve the items before us here tonight. I've had the chance now to visit their restaurant in Naperville. It's on Jefferson Street in downtown Naperville, the very busy part of the downtown. I've been there several times, and I will tell you that every time I'm there, they got the line going out the door for people that want to get in and get their food, because it's very unique and very good. And I would be very pleased to have this join downtown Batavia as another restaurant, because I think it'll bring in a lot of new customers that will maybe stop and, you know, buy their cheese sandwiches from them and then go walking around downtown Batavia and visit some of the rest of ours. So they're a real, I believe, come-on business that we're bringing into Batavia with this one. So I would encourage the council 's support of this.
Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that the planning staff, last year, we had our planning conference in November, and we surreptitiously did go in there and sample the sandwiches fully. And we can say that it was more than adequate.
Would this come out of TIF district funds or just general funds?
Yes, these are all grants that are available to those who are in an existing TIF.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other comments? I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-90-R, awarding a facade improvement grant to Everdine's Grilled Cheese at 227 West Wilson, in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by you, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one will go on the agenda first. And now we will move on to item 11, which is Resolution 2024-72-R, awarding a grant under Downtown Signage Assistance Grant Program with the Downtown Historic District for Everdine's Grilled Cheese, 227 West Wilson Street.
Thank you, Alderman Wolf. This is a quick one. They are going to be doing a sign project that's going to be in total of about $3,000, which will qualify them for the full $1,000 for the signed grant. And again, we are seeking a recommendation that the city council approve the attached Resolution 24-072-R, awarding a Downtown Signage Assistance Program grant in an amount of $1,000.
Does anybody have any questions on this one? Everybody's just going to keep talking about food, and I'll get hungry.
I just looked at the menu. I should have.
I stopped from doing that. I did that early on. All right, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-72-R.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one will go second on the agenda. Item 12, which is Resolution 2024-91-R, awarding a grant under the Downtown Improvement Grant Program for Everdine's Grilled Cheese at 227 West Wilson Street.
Alderman Wolf, I promise, it's the last grant. It's the last one. This is the Downtown Improvement Grant. This particular grant allows for interior work to be done by the applicants for the properties in the TIF. Again, this is 227 West Wilson Street here in the downtown of Batavia. So this particular grant will allow for Everdine's Grilled Cheese to do construction, repair, renovations, interior remodeling, HVAC work, and other operations outlined in the more detailed application. So with this grant, they qualify for $19,866.50 based on two of their lowest BIs in which they have provided to the city. We are recommending that city council approve Resolution 24-091-R, which is the Downtown Improvement Grant to Everdine's Grilled Cheese. And again, that amount is $19,866.50.
Anybody have any questions on this? It's been a while since we've had one business get all the different grants that we had. We've had a couple of years where we haven't done much in the grant world, so.
Alderman Wolf, I want to do, make mention that Brian and Kelly are here, so they would be appreciative of having an opportunity to speak to council and the public as well.
Mayor?
I just want to say, I've had some other mayors from other towns in here in the last couple of weeks. And what they come to see is downtown Batavia today and all the things that are happening, the River Street and the boardwalk shops and all the other stuff. And they were saying that they wish they had their towns in the same position that Batavia does, because about the only place that they could find a couple vacant buildings was on the West Wilson Street Hill. And I said, well, one of those is going to be talked about at the council committee meeting tonight, and I was sure we were going to take favorable action. And the other one is Mr. Olmstead's longest-serving retail business in downtown Batavia, 77 years, which Gene just tells me he just got too old, and his family's moved up to McHenry County. So he's regrettably, he closed the business down and is going to go up there. But I'm sworn to secrecy, but he's got a very interesting tenant coming in that I think will be a nice addition to downtown Batavia. So we're on the right track here, and I think by you doing this tonight, we're sending a real positive message to some good stuff to happen in our downtown.
And yes, I would like to invite them up if they want to, if they'd like to come up before we vote on the last resolution and just let us know where they're at, what's, what the schedule is, and where they think they're going to be open.
Hi, my name is Kelly Herkert.
Hello, I'm Brian Herkert.
Thank you for having us here. And we just really want to thank you guys for all your support. I know this has been like a really long situation. We had hoped to be open a year and a half ago, but here we are. And we were hoping for the summer, but we're kind of at a standstill now, but we're hoping to continue work and hopefully in a few months be ready to go.
We won't even remember the two years, the two years that it took. Once we're open and we're slinging grilled cheeses.
Yeah.
We'll forget all about it. But we do appreciate your patience. You know, we've all remained patient through some difficult moments, but we're going to get there, and it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. Yeah, we're really looking forward to. finishing, getting past the finish line here.
Okay. Thanks for coming here tonight. And, you know, we've got one more to vote on, but I think this is, you know, hopefully this gets it done and gets it open. We're really excited to see that on the, on the hill there.
Awesome. We're excited too.
Yes.
Thank you for persevering.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 24-91-R, awarding a grant under the Downtown Improvement Grant Program for Everdane's Grilled Cheese at 227 West Wilson Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by you, or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. Up next is Ordinance 2024-46, adopting a flag policy by adding Title VII, Chapter VII to the municipal code in City Batavia.
Yes, I'll take this because Max is not here this evening. We received a request from a resident at a prior meeting to fly a flag on the city flagpole. And prior to that, I'd received an email from that resident asking if the city had a policy about what flags are flown on our flagpoles. And I responded that we did not. So back in 2022, there was an important Supreme Court case regarding flags being flown on city flagpoles that was involving the city of Boston. They had received a request from a religious organization to fly a flag on their flagpole. And they had, prior to that, had community groups be allowed to fly different flags on their flagpoles. And what the Supreme Court said was that if you open up your flagpole as a, an avenue, as a public forum for speech, then First Amendment rules apply. And you have an obligation to fly private groups' flags. You can have, you know, sort of rules about that. And but in the case of Boston, they determined that having that kind of rule would open them up to potentially having to fly flags that were contrary to the values that that body views as those of the city of Boston. And so they created a policy that said that their flagpoles shall be for government speech and not a public forum. So before you today is a policy that is modeled on Boston's policy establishing that the city flagpoles are not a public forum and that they are for government speech. And that is not to say that any group might approach the city and request that a flag be flown, but that what flags are flown are expressive of your views and they are government speech. And so that is what is up for your consideration today.
Okay. Who wants to start this?
I read the Supreme Court case. I think, I think the policy makes sense. The ordinance makes sense.
I read the, I read the Supreme Court case. The ordinance makes sense. It's just, it's just protecting everybody involved. I mean, it sets forth appropriate guidelines. And I do believe the case law is supportive of this type of an ordinance. And I think it's just, it just makes sense at this point in time.
I think that we do need to have some type of policy or else we're going to have issues every time anything comes up, anytime anything gets run up the flagpole. So I think that that's an important thing. I think from what I've read or tried to glean from everything I've read about this case and how we would use that, I think it's probably the right thing to do at this point. Dan?
Hi there. I am still en route. I just left a job site a bit ago. I figured I should change clothes first. So I appreciate the work staff has done on the research here. I agree that this is certainly something that was missing. It clarifies why the city has the flags set as they are and what the observance is of, of the law. I know we had mentioned a few years back when we moved the United States flag in our very council chambers, that is the, I think, only Eagle Scout in the room at the time. I pointed to the flag code, US code, to which we were supposed to be saying the pledge of allegiance to, and proper placement of that flag. Having this policy makes it clear what our obligations are and what our respect is for the US code. And to codify it is to say that we're doing what we said we've been doing all along, but to have an official policy on it makes sense. And I would absolutely support this. It also frames any discussion we would have regarding future requests we would have from people. Because as the code reads, yeah, so many people who have presented, hey, can I, can I fly this flag for my organization? Sure, we could do something like that. But where that speech is appropriate does not necessarily coincide with, with where the placement is of the flags we currently have. So this definitely helps us have, have discussions, especially on upcoming items. So thank you for bringing this to us.
When I read through it, I didn't see anything in this particular flag policy about when it was appropriate to lower it half mast. Is that something that should be included?
Actually, that's governed by Illinois law, and we follow the directives that come from the governor with regard to any time that the flag should be lowered. We could adopt as part of this policy to say that it could also by proclamation of the mayor resolution of City Council govern the lowering of the flag because I know that we did do that in honor of John Kennedy.
I don't know if we should do that. I think we just stay, I mean, there's announcements all the time. It's right, it's right on the news.
Yes.
I mean, just stick with what Illinois tells us to do and what the, what the federal government tells us to do about that, I think would be the most appropriate.
And adding another layer to this.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I wasn't requesting another layer. It was just clarification, like if we just wanted to be super clear that we follow the Illinois and federal laws, but.
It's in there, 2A.
Yes, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
Actually, I have my hand up again.
Ian, go ahead.
To, to put some more on this, I believe it was several years ago when we had a series of, of people pass away in the line of duty. I know that the governor had put a lot of requests in for several years running there. I believe it was three years ago, four years ago, that the flag was at half mast for the majority of the year. Because of the number of requests that we received, it was difficult for people to tell when the flag was supposed to return to full mast. But there are times when the governor has proclaimed it so many different weeks in a row that it is actually down for the majority of the year.
Yes, and it was also down for a period of time due to COVID. Nationally, that was recommended. And then it, it comes down for any line of duty death of a first responder.
I don't think we have to go any further on that part of the policy. Tony?
I just want to say I'm fully in support of this. It makes sense. We're days away from Flag Day, which has origins in this town, that we should have a flag policy. And it makes absolute sense to me.
How many flags do we have room for?
So there are three on one of the flagpoles at this point, but we, I don't think that we should put any under the United States and the State of Illinois flag. So that third flagpole is for our other flags. And that is, right now, POW, Batavia Community Flag, and the Unity Flag.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, I think, I know people are here to talk about this. So we'll have some public comment, try to keep it brief, two to three minutes for whatever you want to say. If somebody before you said the same thing, you want to say, you can get up, get your name in the record and say you believe with whatever somebody before that said. So we can try to keep this short. Anybody want to come up and talk to us about it?
Because we do have two other discussions right after this.
Right. And that's why I want to keep this rapid short.
Bob McQuillan, resident of Batavia. Good evening.
Evening.
It's good to be back with you again. I unknowingly poked the bear on May 14th. That night, the city didn't have a flag policy. On May 15th, one day after I spoke, a very detailed flag ordinance was submitted by Max Weiss. I've never seen government work so fast.
You don't know Max.
I don't think Max could have done it in one day. My request was not intended to put anyone on the defensive. I'd never spoken negatively about the pride flag and was only asking for the same opportunity to fly a Christian flag as the LB, I'm sorry, LGBTQ+ community has had for the last three years. According to the new polling from Gallup, the number of American adults who identify as LGBTQ+ has more than doubled in the last 12 years. The latest results show that 7.6% of the US adults now align themselves with the LGBTQ+ community. The population of Batavia in 2022 was 26,122. 7.6% of that number is about 2,000. According to a 2023 Gallup poll, about 3 in 4 Americans said they identify with a specific religious belief. By far, the largest population or proportion was 68%, identifying with a Christian religion, including 33% who are Protestant, 22% Catholic, and 13% who identify with another Christian religion or simply as Christian. The population of Batavia in 2022 was 26,122. 68% of that number is about 17,800 people. Please keep those numbers, 2,000 and 17,800, in mind as you proceed with this meeting. In today's world, neither group can be ignored. The US Constitution and the Bill of Rights allows everyone to live their life as they see fit. Let's pull back the curtain and see why the new policy is being announced so quickly. It is clear that the new policy was specifically written to eliminate, eliminate certain groups from requesting their flag to be flown. Some would argue that this is a violation of the First Amendment. The Supreme Court did, in fact, agree in the, in the case mentioned earlier. That violation cost the city of Boston $2.1 million. The city staff is asking City Council to decide whether the flagpole paid by Batavia taxpayers is government speech or recognized as a public forum. Over the past three days, I've spent many hours researching this distinction. And quite frankly, I'm not 100% sure I understand the difference. Do the majority of City Council members understand the difference? Merriam-Webster's definition of public forum is straightforward, where now law school's definition of government speech has a lot of moving parts. If you would like, I can send you those definitions. The proposed flag policy has no method for any group, individual or organization, to request a flag to be flown. The argument can be made that since the Pride Unity flag has flown for the last three years, all groups and organizations have that right under the First Amendment. From my research, separation of church and state is not a reason to deny flying a religious flag. This, again, was the basis of the Supreme Court ruling mentioned above, and which you also mentioned in your proposal. Just as the invocation said before every city council meeting, doesn't violate separation of church and state. I can also provide you with the definition of church and state if you would welcome that. With a stroke of a pen, does Batavia really want to possibly take away the First Amendment rights of groups like the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, the Lions Club, the Batavia Plain Dirt Gardeners, the Batavia Women's Club, every church in the city, the Scouts, and possibly many more? A previous boss once told me, don't bring me your problems, bring me solutions. In my opinion, the City Council has a few options. First, eliminate all ancillary flags. Not sure that anybody wants to do that. Number two, create a small committee of five local Batavia residents. This committee would review all flag applications, vote on them, and report back to City Council. The council would agree or disagree to fly the flag. This would be fair to all applicants and will allow the council to reject those groups that don't align with Batavia's values. That was the problem in Boston. They never objected to a flag, and they objected to a Christian flag. And that was the violation of the First Amendment rights. It would be legal because there would be no discrimination against any group. Some are approved and some aren't. Number three, have a public hearing and allow residents to vote, to voice their opinion. City Council members are elected to represent all residents of their ward. How do you know their opinion if you haven't heard from them? The role of an alderperson isn't to vote their own opinion. They are elected to vote the will of all Batavia residents. Number four, put the question to referendum. Let the voters decide. Batavia has never had a flag policy since it was founded in 1833. Why the rush to approve one in six days? Why not put a memorant, a moratorium on flying any flag effective after June 30th of this year? This will allow you to take your time and make an educated decision that truly reflects the values of the majority of Batavia residents. This could probably be done within six months. I'm hope you're, I hope you're all listening to me. A flag policy doesn't need to be decisive issue. God knows we have enough of those in today's world. I ask that you take the time. Again, six days is not enough. You have the opportunity to discuss a policy in a civil manner and come to an educated decision that is agreeable to the majority of residents. I have faith that the City Council will meet this challenge and make the right decision. Thank you for your time this evening.
I will say, I will agree with Bob on one thing. I think that we need to take more time before we decide to vote on this. I think that there's still a few things that I would like to know and research, how we're going to pick out what flags we're going to allow, how we're going to implement a policy. So I think those are the questions in my mind that I think we need to answer as a council.
What the policy would say that the, it would come from the City Council. So the mechanism for that would be that either a member of council on their own volition and or a member of the public could petition to their alderman or other aldermen to propose that a flag be flown. be flown on those flag poles, but that it would be this body that would have to put forth the resolution and then have that be voted upon by you as a group. And the same would be if someone were to take the suggestion for adding a flag to the mayor, who would prepare a proclamation, and that proclamation would need to be adopted by the city council at a meeting.
In my mind, it's how do we get from here to there? What does that process look like? Is there a form that we're going to use? Is there going to be anything else besides what's in the policy today that we would use? And do we want anything else in it? How do we want to do that? And what's the recommendation, I guess, to me, over and above that, from our legal representation, how we handle that? What's the safest thing for us to do so that we don't open up ourselves to lawsuits, that we don't open up ourselves to other issues that we don't need to create any more issues over? I guess is what I'm thinking. Mark?
Yeah, I'm kind of with just thinking about it a little longer and doing some personal research. I personally haven't had any time since this came out to really do anything about it. And I agree that, you know, waiting, and I applaud Mr. McQuillan on saying, after this month, others in town have not been that respectful of what of the decisions we have made, saying, "Take down the flag now." So I'm assuming when he said that, he was, you know, not saying, "Take it down and stop now. Take down the unity flag and stop now." So I appreciate his thought on that. So I think stepping back and looking at things a little deeper is probably important.
One of the safest things to do is to follow the United States Supreme Court. Okay? I mean, it's really not that hard to figure out. So they've actually ruled on this exact issue. I mean, it's, and they haven't overturned themselves. They are the Supreme Court. And so it's the existing law of the land. It's applicable to everything from federal government on down to Batavia. So if we follow what the Supreme Court says, you ask what the safest thing to do is? That's the safest thing to do. For me, and I read case law all the time, it's as easy as that. You just follow what the Supreme Court says.
And you're comfortable with the policy that's there, that we don't have to do anything else to it or anything else with it?
I'm comfortable because it's been generated in connection with what Boston did. And Boston has not had any problems since they put that in place after they got slapped for not doing it the right way the first time by the Supreme Court. They actually got, they were slapped, it was, it went all the way up to the Supreme Court. There was different opinions, but ultimately the Supreme Court slapped them and said, "You guys didn't do it right, and now they did do it right." And so that's why I am comfortable with that. I mean, and that's just me looking at it from the way I usually look at things from the legal standpoint. That's why I think it's appropriate.
Abby?
Well, Chris, you kind of answered the question that I had that I didn't get a chance to research over the weekend was, what has happened since in Boston? Like, what discussions have they had? What flags have they raised? What were those conversations at their council like? And what was that deliberation, that process? To your point, Alan, what did that look like? And what have the results been? Does anybody, do you know?
I don't know about the results, but I know that they haven't had any problems since then. So.
But have they flown no flags since?
And I guess that's one of the things I want to know. I want to know what the process is going to be like. I'm not going to be here, you know, another decade, but I'd like to be able to leave a process that somebody else can work with and not have this continually be an issue every time something would come before us. So I guess to me, I'm okay with the case law and that that's what we would follow. I want to know what the process is going to be. So that way, we feel comfortable as a process, with the process. The public is more than aware of the process, but involved in the process. So that way, we do have understanding. Because every time we change something and there isn't understanding, there's 150 people here. Or there's comments for days that are nowhere near what the truth is. So that's some of the things I want to try to head off and make sure that we address before we do this.
The way I understood the policy as it's written was very much the one that Mr. McQuillan outlined, that this would be something that was brought to a vote each time, and then we'd have the opportunity to discuss, deliberate, does this match our values? Does this match a majority of our values? Yea, yonae. It's brought to us by our residents. It's brought to us, it's brought up ourselves. Two people have to get it on the agenda, like the same process that everything else, every other change in the city follows. It just, yeah, it seemed a little bit more straightforward to me and actually matches, I thought, what Mr. McQuillan had.
I guess to me, I thought to the deep end on the one side. We got seven people that all applied the same day and want something done. What do we do? How do we handle those? Because that's going to happen. I just about guarantee you, when that policy goes into effect, we're going to see that. We're going to have to vote on those. So that's kind of what I want us to know what we're getting ourselves into. I'll be back to you guys in a second.
On that note, that thought I had is maybe a petition requirement, just to sort of undergird that there's, you know, a given flag has some support in the community as a way to moderate that. But I can understand if that isn't the most viable option.
You could get 150 or 1,000 signatures on something that you would find objectionable.
I'll be back in a second. First, over here, Jen will go around.
I think what we're getting caught up in is not moving forward. Like, there's two different things. There's a policy that you put in place and then the process that you kind of follow up with. And I think what's getting hung up on is where this policy is pretty straightforward, it's the process. I don't see why we couldn't vote on the policy and then define, have another meeting where we talk about the process and what that may look like. Again, you know, it lays out some of the requirements of what it needs to be, but I think to at least get a policy in place, we're not rushing anything. We're getting a policy in place. It's that process that we go. The other thing that's, that I find very intriguing is the time that I've been on the council, there's only been one request, and it has always been around the unity flag being raised. And there hasn't been any others. So I don't think that that, we're going to get seven requests in one day to have a flag that's raised. I'm sitting here going, what do these different groups, you know, have flags to raise? So I think I'm okay with moving forward with adopting the policy and then as a council, maybe have another discussion about the process.
I was just going to say quickly that the Village of Buffalo Grove has a fairly robust policy on flag displays, if we wanted something else to reference.
My understanding is that they have the similar process, like they've got a committee and people apply, and then the committee recommends. And so they don't have, I think that they are in the position like Boston before the Supreme Court decision, where if they were to, if their committee made a recommendation for a flag that their city council then found objectionable and said no to, then they'd be in the midst of a First Amendment case.
And I just worry about if we have a committee and they say no to stuff and it was valuable, then we're on the hook because we've created a committee that allows these decisions.
Boston, it cost them $2.1 million because they didn't have a policy in place. I'd like to see a policy in place so we don't spend any money on this, for one. Get that policy in place, the procedure, we have every right to do that. We have a right to change policy. But absent a policy, can get very expensive. And, you know, Chris, I appreciate that. The Supreme Court ruled on this. There's no safer, you know, bet than to follow what the Supreme Court said would be the legal route.
I'm not against a policy.
Yeah.
At all. I think we need it.
Yeah, my point is, yeah, and I think we agree, we need the policy, but I don't think we need to delay because we open ourselves up by delaying. Get the policy in place and then we set the procedures.
Well, I'm the guy that gets the calls during the daytime here. And I will tell you that since this conversation kind of really began with some movement behind it, in the last three weeks, I have been called by three different groups who tell me they got a flag and they want to come down and bring their flag down here and put it on our flag pole. And some of them are very reliable community groups. I mean, high-profile, patriotic to the degree. And so they're asking, you know, I was sitting there thinking, well, maybe, you know, we got the flag monument right down here. Maybe we should have several flag poles up here. I'm not sure how many, but maybe we should have five. Or we got, what, three now, I guess it is? And we could put some more up. But I agree that I think there needs to be a committee and we need to review who's all coming and what they're doing. But they're starting to stand in line at the door here of those wanting to come in and put, and there's, it's nothing I would describe as some wild thing. They're all highly appreciated movable groups. But, you know, I don't know how you tell one, "Well, we'll let this one on, but we're not going to let the other one on." It's going to be a delicate dance for us to do, but I think we do need to bring some order and understanding to it. And, you know, agreeing with what Bob said earlier, there's just a whole bunch of movement that needs to be put into place here. And I'm glad we're having the discussion because right now, it's, it's become kind of a community thing that needs to be resolved. And I think what's been presented here tonight, Laura went over it with me, and I agree that there needs to be a policy put up and a procedure is followed, that the council then at the end, you can all have a say on what you agree and don't agree to. But as I used to say in the Tonight Show, there's more to come here. I can promise you that because there's already people, or groups, rather, that are ready to come in and say, "We want to put our flag up in front of the city hall."
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, to me, I think this is an obvious decision. And that is, no flags get flown except for government flags. You just open up a can of worms. I mean, what do you, you know, okay, well, what if somebody comes and wants to fly a political flag, right? Well, what's deemed political? What's not political? Flags are an area of, you know, prioritization, right? Who's flag's above whose, right? There's a reason the American flag has to be above every other flag. It's, there's a hierarchy. It's known since we were kids. So I think we just open up, you know, most people's hearts and minds are in the right place when they want to raise whatever flag it might be. But that's why we have private property. Fly your flag on your own private property.
And you think the priority should be on the policy? I definitely agree that there needs to be a procedure in place so we have some guidelines and understand how we treat each request fairly. It's difficult to codify what is not acceptable. And I'm curious if anyone in the group has given any thought to that. I have, and I'm having trouble coming up with what I would consider to be a nonstarter, or what would be something that is not appropriate to fly. I know, I know that flags that are of religious nature are supposed to be not, something that would be considered an option because of separation issues there. And we would have to have some sort of separate place to place those. I had brought up during the discussions with the unity flag, which Jen, thanks for bringing that up. We have, that's the only request we really have received, is from people that wanted to raise that one. That one has passed this body unanimously and under different iterations of this council with different people placing, taking their place at this dais. That one has been tested. I'm curious why it received the approval that it did. And had it received a no vote, what the basis for a no might have been? So if we were to adopt this policy, which I actually would say, I can't think of a reason not to send this part onto council for consideration and request it in a future committee meeting, we go over the procedures on what would be required of future requests. It is government speech, not speech of the government. I think I might draw a distinction there, all in my lens. See, I don't think it's government flags. I think it's what the government is trying to speak about. So if we wanted to put up a flag for 4th of July, if we wanted to put up a flag for...
The United States flag.
One more time?
It's called the US flag. That's what goes up. Government's speech, speech of the government, whatever. It's, you know, my opinion was that those are the only flags that truly, because of where you live, encompass everybody. No matter what anyone wants to say, everything else is opinion. These are the flags that are set in place for where we live. This is the land we govern. I don't, yeah, for me, it's kind of crazy because where does it end? What if somebody wants to come fly the Confederate flag underneath the US flag? Or is somebody, you know, I mean, it can get crazy. And I'm not saying those people wouldn't be nefarious doing it, you know? I'm just saying it could happen.
We also live in the state of Illinois. So what I was saying was that the government's features is, if we're speaking as a municipality, we're flying the US flag, we're flying the US flag. There's a county flag. There is a city flag. So between one, two, that's three, with country, state, county, municipality, that's four. We have the prisoner war flag as well. And that's all, I think, the majority of places fly, is a combination of those. Some don't have an inclusion of county per se. But that's the government speaking, saying this is inclusive of all of the regional or municipal or your state and whatnot. Those are the government speaking and saying, "Here's where you live, people." But if that municipality decides they want to raise a flag for Boo Boo Days, that flag could have a place, actually, on that pole. It would not go above any of the others that I just said, but that might be a thing. Or it's possible we would have one for Oktoberfest. They would fly on those same poles. That would be the council's decision if we wanted to raise one of those types of flags. I had made the proposal, which I know this is a separate discussion item, that the unity flag empirically and logically actually does fit among those other government speech flags, because the unity flag does represent all.
Keep the comments down. We're trying to listen to somebody. Have a little respect. Dan, go ahead.
That particular flag has the prism of colors on it. It has colors that were invented by your god or invented by your science, whichever you choose to profess to, or by a combination of the two. But that flag does represent me. I know it does. I happen to be one of the subsections on there. I'm a bisexual, so I'm on there as well, if you want to talk about it, the colors being a representation of sexuality. Again, that's for a separate discussion. But the reason I proposed that was that was the government saying, "We include everyone here in this community." That's why I had thought it might be appropriate for that to be consideration under a permanent place on that flag. Because that would be our local government saying, "We are an inclusive place." We've empirically shown that over, you know, three separate years of unanimous support for it, why it may have a place on this. I'll reserve the majority of my comments for that later discussion. But if we are framing this as a policy, what is objectionable? Why is it objectionable?
Dan, hold on a second.
If I could, I think I hear that most are in favor of the policy. And that's the decision item here. Following this item, we're making two decisions about what should be on those flag poles. If we want to add other discussions regarding whether other things that are currently on the flag pole should come off of the flag pole, or whether things that are not on the flag pole should go on the flag pole, I would recommend that we put that on future discussions.
Agreed. So I was actually wrapping up there. I was, I do support this policy. We need to... And if someone wants to make a motion, I would think that would be an appropriate step forward.
Bob has a comment that he wanted to make before we get to the vote.
One more comment before we go to talk about voting on this. Go ahead, Bob.
The Supreme, just to clarify, the Supreme Court did make a decision, and they ruled against Boston, and they said that a Christian flag, just because it would, I mean, happened to be a Christian flag, but a Christian flag could fly. So that's the decision that the Supreme Court made. Now, what, please, can you listen to me without shaking your head, sir?
I got my hand raised. You can keep on talking. I have not interrupted you, sir.
You're shaking your head, no. That's disrespectful.
It's not. You're misinterpreting the law, sir.
No, I'm not.
Okay, let's let's
The reason
I have a back and forth here.
The reason Boston is not having any problems now is because they changed from a personal forum to a government speech. Okay? So that's really the question that is in your proposal right now. Is are those flags out there, public forums, or are they government speech? Now, those flags were paid for by you, by me, by these people out here. There have been prayers around those flags in the past. In my opinion, that's a public forum. If you bring your kids out there and they sit by the flag and say the pleasure of allegiance, that's a public forum. It's not government speech. And you have in that policy that you're going to change to public to government speech. That's the question that really has to be answered in this policy that you're looking to do. If you accept this policy, are you going to change it when you find out the real definition of public forums versus government speech? And that's where I said government's forum or public's forums are pretty clear cut in the definition. Government speech is not, is not. Thank you.
Abby, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment to the to the overall kind of both the fear that we might get inundated with flag requests and we are might have to engage in some difficult conversations about what we would allow and what we wouldn't allow. My brain also went to the really positive place when when Bob mentioned like the Batavia Women's Club, where these groups are that might be coming to the mayor, that this also provides a really nice opportunity to hear from our local groups that might have a position that might have something they want to celebrate, that might be going through their own challenges that we can help promote or give a voice to. That we could fly a bulldog when we go to state championships, you know, for for our home team and stuff like that, that it really, I know that there will be really difficult conversations to follow, and I think that's what we are here for, and I kind of look forward to that opportunity in in the future. Oh, there's something else, but I forgot.
Chris, did you want to make a comment?
The case of Shirtliff versus City of Boston set forth that the City of Boston violated the First Amendment, and then the case law defined why they violated the First Amendment. And the reason why they violated the First Amendment is because it did not have a policy in place setting forth that the flag poles are meant for government speech. That's the interpretation of the case. They set forth why there was a violation and how you could not have a violation. That's what it said. And then there are definitions of what government speech are. It's in case law, and there's definitions of public forum as well. It's in the case law as well.
Anybody else on the council have a comment now? And do we want to vote on this tonight? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Can I ask a question of Chris again? So if I'm understanding it, this is a forum. We have free speech here. People can come address us and tell us whatever they want, and they can promote whatever flag that they want and it or whatever the decision is that we're that we're making. And then we, as the electeds, vote, and then that vote becomes ordinance and policy and direction and action. And so that's government speech. That is us speaking as a body and the majority rules on this floor, this dais, and that that vote goes into action and that is protected as government speech?
Government speech.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, it can't, it's not viewed as speech of a private party or a private citizen. It's not a private citizen who wants to come flag their fly their family crest because this is their month of whatever. So
A good analogy is in the hallway, those TV screens out there are government speech. We don't invite private groups to post their messages on those televisions out there.
Tony?
I move we send with a positive recommendation, ordinance 2024-046, adopting a flag policy to miss two municipal code.
Second. Motion by Malay, second by Sulfah. Discussion, anybody want to comment before we vote?
Yeah, I just want to say, I want to get this on the next COW to have a discussion on the process now, if someone will join me.
I will join you.
Yeah, because I, yes, and that's, that's my hang up too, is that I hate putting stuff out there because then tomorrow when somebody or next Tuesday, when somebody asks, what are we doing? And we don't have an answer.
And technically, the next agenda item, too.
Yeah. Well, we don't have an answer on the next two agenda items, to be honest with you, but until
We will bring, we will bring a proposed procedure to next COW meeting, but it's going to look like how the community flag got up there, the unity flag got up there, and these two agenda items got on is that the public can make a request either to the administration department or to any member of this council, and that then we will put it on an agenda for discussion.
Thank you.
I think, you know, we're going to codify this and try to make this something that we can look to use in the future, and I think it's important for us to have a procedure, to have it fleshed out. So that way, there's no, well, you get your flag up there, but I don't get mine because you know somebody or whatever the questions and the comments are going to be. I'd like us to have that figured out and have that policy when we do this. I don't have a problem with what we're doing tonight, the way we're going at this, but I realize that there's more to it than just this.
We'll learn along the way.
Oh, yeah.
There'll be things in the procedure where we're like, oh, that wasn't really comfortable, you know? As Nick would say
I'm not worried about comfort. We can discuss things.
We need to be nimble, nimble in our procedure.
George?
Just to be fair, I think we should also, in this next discussion, vote on whether or not we want any flags to be flown. So you can put together a generic process that we can talk about, but we should also vote on whether or not we want any flags at all. Personally, I'm on the Tim Lancy camp. I don't want any third-party flags flown. So if we all decided that, procedure doesn't matter, right?
I think the POW MIA goes down, too.
Correct? Yep, exactly.
Can we keep going and take Illinois down, too?
No. No.
Dan, go ahead.
And I notice that the next two items are approval items. There's a request for residents to have a flag up, and then I have brought to this committee the idea of perpetually displaying unity flag. In the absence of a procedure in place, it doesn't seem fair for this committee to consider either of those two approvals. And I would request, if Bob is still in the audience, if he would withdraw his request for raising that flag this evening, or at least have us table that discussion, I would table items 14 and 15 for a meeting when we can consider them after a procedure is in place. It just seems disingenuous to consider their approval without
I was going to wait until after we got through this agenda item before we did that.
Okay.
But I think we're going to do that.
Yeah, I just think
Move those, table those to another meeting after we have
When we get to those
Procedures.
Yeah.
He just asked me if I'd be willing to table
Okay.
The next one. I am not. I waited a month, and I, all due respect, I came to the
Well, there is not a procedure in place to approve your request tonight.
Excuse me? There is or any
If you want to present your request, then we can vote on that.
It's, it's, yeah, yeah.
We would have the right to table.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could table
We don't need to have this discussion now. There's a amendment, an motion on the on the floor.
In a second.
We need to stay germane to the motion on the floor.
Let us vote on this first item. Just have a seat.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion from the council? Okay.
I didn't get transferred what I was saying.
Go ahead, Dan.
Which was, it seems like it would not be appropriate. I'll wait for the outcome of this vote. It makes sense that if this this policy is approved, there would be incumbent upon us to move both approvals that we're considering until such time that we have something in place. I was asking out of courtesy if Bob would be willing to have his table, but it's actually not really up to him if we table it. So let's just go and have the vote.
People are going to ask what what happens with existing flags since we
We have to, we got to come up with a procedure. Sir, we'll come up with a procedure.
In the meantime, I'm saying.
Okay. Hold on one second. All right, we have an ordinance on the floor here to vote on, ordinance 2024-46, adopting a flag policy, adding Title VII, Chapter VII to the municipal code. And motion by Malay, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Seron, vocal singer, that's 12.
It'll go onto the council with positive recommendation. At this point, if Tony, you would like to make a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion to table items 14 and 15 until after we have a discussion on the procedure.
Motion by Malay, second by Chanzet. Give us a second, Bob. Any discussion on the council level on that one? Okay. Give you a minute.
Thank you. The beginning of the meeting, the question was asked if any agenda item should be removed, and no one asked that agenda item should be removed. So I don't believe There's a point of order here. We're following Robert's rules, and to have someone from the audience that's not a voting member of this board interrupt our proceedings is very problematic.
I'm trying to be courteous and give him a minute to talk, and that's exactly what I was going to tell him, Tony, is that we don't have to have an agenda item at the end of a meeting or in the middle of a meeting, changed at the beginning, because something in between those changed the basis of what we're going to do. We do this all the time, moving items, when whatever situation comes up, when we table it, we move it to another meeting.
I would just say
I'm sorry you don't like that, but that's reality.
I'm not saying that I don't like it. I'm explaining to you what I think. Okay? What I think is that you should really at least discuss both items, because when these items were requested, there was no policy in place. You still have no policy in place. You voted tonight to forward it to the city council. So it doesn't mean that there's a policy in place. You go back to the previous policy, and if you don't hear my request, potentially, you could be in violation of the Supreme Court's reason for Boston, potentially.
We're not making any decision, Bob. Please stop. Just let us talk. We haven't made a decision, and we're going to base the decision off whatever policy we approve and whatever procedure we approve.
But this request, again, respectfully, this request was made a month ago, and I was told it would be on the next COW meeting, and it did appear on the next COW meeting. But the next day, all of a sudden, a policy proposal appeared. That's because we're open to legal liability. So this is just so we don't make knee-jerk reactions and What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that within a day, there was a policy. Okay?
Where do you see the policy in one day? Because it
Because it was dated.
Until this
Look at the date that Max put on it.
Well, sure, but we don't put it on an agenda until
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that policy was developed directly directly from what I requested or spoke to the council about. Now, my position, I'm just going to
It was based on your email to me saying, does the city have a policy? And I, we found out, no, we don't have a policy. And I thought, hey, Bob, good idea. The city should have a policy.
Yep, I agree. But your policy in place, your policy in place We've got a motion on the table, on the, a motion on the floor to table. I would appreciate that we stay germane to that topic and vote on that.
Okay. I gave you a minute, Bob. You got more than that, so we're going to vote on this now.
You're going to give me a minute?
No, I already did. So we're done, and you can have a seat, and we're going to vote on this motion.
Okay. Okay. You're going to table both items? That's the motion on the table.
We're going to wait until the vote, and we'll see if
We follow Robert's rules of order. I understand. I'll, I'll speak the next time you bring it up. Thank you.
If we can get a roll call on the motion to table 14 and 15.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Seron, vocal singer, that's 12.
Thank you. Up next is item 16, discussion on first and water intersection pedestrian crossings.
Good evening. I'm going to actually bring up the graphics. So this item was discussed almost four weeks ago, and council or committee gave us some guidance on how they would like us to stripe the first and water intersection and also the mid-block intersection in front of the animal hospital. So I'm going to show the first one is the first and water intersection. This is something that Laura, myself, Carrie, and Bill worked together to prepare a graphics for you to see what the intersection would look like with the high-visibility crosswalk, a stop for pedestrian crossing sign in the middle, more pedestrian crossing signs on the westbound and eastbound of First Street, and also some small ballers, you know, plastic ballers to tighten the radius at this intersection. And there will be high-visibility, high-visibility crosswalk also on Water Street side with a stop sign or a stop bar right before the crosswalk. Would like to see any comments or improvements, or do you like it, don't like it? Okay. Looks good.
In the right direction. I like it.
Okay, so we will, obviously, Bill, Bill Callum, our street superintendent, was intensely involved with this, so we'll, we'll get him implement that as soon as we can.
Yes.
Quick question. So the the white cones, those are like the collapsible kind, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can hit it and
But the sign's not, right?
The sign is not. It will be on a post.
Why don't you want to move that a little bit closer to the sidewalk, I would think, maybe?
Like you want it to move farther this way?
Yeah.
I think it would be an interesting test to see if it gets Yeah.
Or if you, I mean, well, all right. I know I'm going to get outvoted on this, but I don't think that should be sitting in the middle of the street.
Yeah, those, I mean, those signs are sometimes in the middle of the street, people do hit them. I mean, people have hit street lights, light poles, anything that you can think.
But we're Good luck pedestrians.
Good luck pedestrians.
I mean, the idea is that people will see that sign, slow down. They will see all those collapsible barricades, if you want to say, and they will slow down to make the right turn. So really slow them down at this intersection, so.
Well, I mean, just to be devil's advocate, if that's your whole point, then you might as well move that one into the street and the curb too. I mean, you know.
Second.
You know, yeah, of course. I don't think it's appropriate to have in the middle of the street. I don't mind the white ones that all collapse necessarily. Because that's a good marker right there. You can even make them neon.
To take it a thing further, where when we put new stop signs up, we put out the one that's bordered in LED lights, that flash. Is there a way with that sign that we could make that sign as you're coming down the hill, do that for the first two months or something? So that way, it would be, it would be very visible at all times. Because I think that's important when we change signage, especially stop signs or something like this where we're trying to protect pedestrians. That, you know, if we could do that, I think that would be something to look into.
Alan, I'm going to, my inner Gary, I doubt you can do flashing lights on the crosswalk because-
Not on a permanent basis. You might be able to do-
But on the crosswalk, because that would indicate that somebody's crossing.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to think of that, Mark.
Okay.
Yes.
I know that they have had the ones around the perimeter of the sign. St. Charles has it on 31 with the pedestrian crossing. And it flashes 100% of the time. It's not like the beacon ones, but they have to advise that type of thing they do have.
If we could look into that. I just want to try to make this work as best as we can for the minimal amount that we're trying to do there. Which one of you wants to go first?
This might be nitpicky. My only concern with that specific sign is it could block visibility of somebody trying to cross right there. I've kind of noticed a similar issue with the mid-block crossing on Wilson Street. The signs are like right between me and the vehicle. But I'm not sure how best to, not that one, the one on the right.
This one?
Just because it's placed in the bump out like that. I'm not sure geometrically a better solution, though, just calling attention to concern.
I mean, there is some responsibility for the pedestrians, like when they are walking into the street, they should look. They should not leave this air and say, I have a full go. So it goes both ways. I'll talk to Bill and see whether we can move it farther south, if you want to say, a little bit farther south. Not as much, but leave like enough room between that visible crossing and that sign so that people can see the person.
I definitely appreciate that.
That's a good feedback.
Thank you.
I was going to say, because in an ideal world, in the future, there would be a sidewalk that mirrored the other one and maybe a landscaping strip between the sidewalk and the street. And that sign would be pushed back because it would mirror what's on the other side of the street, which is the more appropriate place for it to be. But especially now for the beginning, when there's a change, having it more obtrusive and obvious, I think, is a good thing to start. And then as we make roadway improvements, then it gets moved to the appropriate-
Like we're doing on North River Street, like adjust as we go along to keep making it better.
Do we also, is it possible, I don't know if there's a distance, and it's a thing for Bill, further up First Street, having a sign that says like crosswalk ahead or something? I know that I've seen those in places. So I don't know if just overemphasizing.
Yes.
If that's something to look at too.
I asked that question and Bill mentioned to me that there is something to the effect of saying pedestrian crossing ahead. But I'll talk to him and see whether we can highlight that also.
Thank you.
The second one should go faster. I think I opened it first. Okay, so this is the mid-block crossing in front of the BI. I don't know why I am opening. Sorry, give me a second. I lost it. It's the same one. Okay, so there is the mid-block crossing, similar setup, the two pedestrian crossing signs. And then in the middle of the lane, there is that yield to pedestrian sign or stop, and then high visibility crosswalk.
I like how the signs are not in the middle of the street.
Mark?
I might know on this because I don't like the mid-blocks. And I don't know if we've ever had an incident there. I mean, people cross all the time, like in the middle. I'll cross that street. People cross all the time. I'll also reference, I walk across 31 without a crosswalk. I just make sure I do it when there's no cars. And these, and these types of locations create a false sense of security.
I was prompted by the business owner at Hearth and Hammer seeing children crossing here. And then Alderman Lehman, were you also saying that your son uses this going between the quarry and to McDonald's back and forth?
Right, and I understand your concerns. And I would have the same concerns on roads with two lanes going in both directions. The mid-block crossings definitely make me nervous. But I think just visibility to pedestrians up and down First Street, anything we can do. Because there are, there's a lot of pedestrian crossing. Even if people are crossing outside of the crosswalks, at least it's continuing to bring awareness, I think, with these multiple crosswalks here.
And I'll also say, my kids go to, my kid and all her friends go to the quarry. And with the way everything is all messed up down there right now, they use the back parking lot by Drenel and Jansen's to cut through all the time because they go to Walgreens and McDonald's. And also, there are, the pets are right there. Because, you know, people walking their dogs across the street instead of randomly crossing everywhere, maybe it'll direct them better. I think it's a good idea. I mean, even if you want to get rid of the middle thing, fine. But having the crosswalk and the other signs, I still like it, but I think it's a good idea right there.
I will say, I think anything we can do to slow pedestrian, or slow traffic down around the pedestrian crossings is a good thing. So the center sign, I'm fine with. I use this one a lot. We do use that there. It is a place that I cross. I would much rather cross there than try and cut across anywhere else mid-block as people fly down the hill. So if we can slow them down when they get to the first crosswalk, it should be even slower by the time they get to the second one. Okay, I don't see anybody shaking their head no, so figure out how soon you can do it.
So there's rapid flashing beacons that we talked about on Route 31 and Route 25. You don't hear anything about Route 25. We actually get calls from people thanking us that we have those on Route 25. And the primary reason is only one lane in each direction. So if this is something that it looks like it's working well, and, you know, this will be a good application for the rapid flashing beacon, solar powered rapid flashing beacon in future. I'm not saying now.
First, get the road diet permit, and then we'll talk about the other stuff. Yeah. Okay. I think that was pretty easy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Rahad.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to item 16, a discussion on appointing vice chairs to the vacancies on city services and public utilities.
Yes, there is a vice chair vacancy on both the city services and public utilities committees. Jennifer Baron is the most senior alderman at this point, who does not have an appointment on any other committees. And so she would have the first choice of the open positions. Jennifer, have you considered whether you would like to be vice chair of either one of those committees?
Let's do city services.
Okay. And then we find ourselves-
That's a good point.
What?
Because he was vice chair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's vacant, then you're not a chair? So you're saying you'd like to make this more complicated? No, I'm just joking. We can do it differently if you'd like.
I don't know if there's, if that's just our policy or if that's like something that is mandated.
Before following elections and when there was people that went off, it was vice seniority. It was decided who would chair the committees and then followed by-
Yeah, you reshuffle.
The vice chairs.
Yeah, we didn't do anything after Mike left.
Yeah. Because Mike was city service and I was vice chair of city service and then-
I'd also love like a review of what the committees are, what they're responsible for, and what the chairs and vice chairs are actually supposed to do. I don't think we've ever really done that in my time.
So there is a definition of what the different committees are on the city council committee page, I believe. And then the chairs and vice chairs, they are basically to, that's their area of expertise on council. They are the ones to present those items to council and act as an additional resource on them by, over time, developing experience with the different issues that come up under those different categories. But we could take a fresh set of eyes to whether we need committees at all at this point because you are a committee of the whole. Maybe, maybe that's something that we can abandon altogether. So maybe we should have a future discussion about the committee structure itself. And we can kind of do a little overview, like you say, of historically, what areas have those committees covered? And then if we want to keep the same committees and structure, then we can just say, do we want to, you know, do a complete reset? And by seniority, have everybody pick what chair and vice chair that they would like to be.
Another question, are these committees like a universal thing to other municipalities? These were based on our situation. So is there room then to do other committees?
They're kind of distilled down from the, I think, seven or eight we had back early 2000s. Yeah.
So, and what they were driven by was what are the types of issues that become presented? And how can we get these into four buckets? I think that was historically how that was done.
We condensed it down from going from multiple committees with, you know-
Their own meetings.
Their own meetings. And then trying to get that all distilled down and get it at a council meeting was very difficult for many years. And then once we moved to the committee of the whole, it really provided everybody to be able to have better understanding of the issues that came before us. Because you didn't have to rely on somebody else to tell you, oh, yeah, I went to, you know, public utilities. Well, I was at a government services meeting and we had to share information back and forth. And again, that was not the best thing. So I think we're in a better place now. Plus, everything is recorded. Everything is, you know, usually you're able to be in contact with via Zoom. So we can usually make sure that you have all the real information of what happened at that meeting, rather than rely on meeting minutes that didn't get out very rapidly back then. That was, that was a real problem because then you had to find somebody at the meeting that was going to tell you not just their side of what happened, but what really happened at the meeting. So, you know, and I think that this is a discussion that we need to have and decide, do we want to try to make a decision on how we handle this before the election or after? Because I don't know how much the room's going to change. Mark?
Yeah, I don't care. I don't need to be a chair. So it really doesn't matter to me like right now. So I think go have the vice chairs, let's get them in place. But then it's all going to change depending on Dan's timeline. And at that point, we need to be ready to then reshuffle. Because then at that point, there's two, technically two changes that would have been made.
Say that again. I just, you said-
Just move forward with what we're trying to do right now.
The two vice chairs now. And then wait until after the election?
Well, it's going to change when Dan, if Dan vacates.
Chair.
Then there's, then we can go back and if we do the whole thing and reshuffle. Because that was part of the thing is like, oh, hey, I've got most seniority and people would pick what they wanted to do rather. And then the fourth person kind of got stuck with something.
I would like to say that this has been a work in progress for as long as I've been around here. And we've changed the committees several times. When I was first around, we had a local government committee, which involved a conversation with the county board and the sheriff's office and a whole bunch of people. And then we got ourselves into, you know, where you're going to be with all the other stuff that's going to happen in the city. You know, the big one was before we had a park district. We had a big, one of the biggest committees on the city council was the parks committee. Because that oversaw the quarry and the playgrounds and everything else. And that's where Hall Beach comes from, is we had Bosco Hall worked at the street department in the wintertime. And then in the summer, he took the job of running the quarry swimming pool. And that's where his name finally got on it because he was down there for so long. But, I mean, this has just been a constant work in progress. And I think, Alan, you were probably just getting on, when we changed this whole thing over to have this committee of the whole thing versus having you, if you had all these committees, there were some nights that aldermen got invited down here, three or four nights during the week. And this way, you consolidated them all and put them all in. And that way, everybody on the council really knew what was going on and all the committees. And we were finally, I know when we got rid of that public parks committee, which was the one that had the quarry and all that good stuff, that was really looked upon by most of the aldermen as a great relief that let the park district now that's been elected, take that over and you have it and we're done with it. So, I mean, there's just been a lot of changes and it's been an ongoing work in progress. But I think we're in the right direction now that the way we run this, it allows everybody in the council to know what's going on and everything in the city.
I think it is time to kind of look at the different committees and groups and refresh. I think that it's worth a discussion, especially for thinking long term and, you know, kind of setting up how vacancies will be handled. So I think it would definitely be worth a discussion. Because there may be some other areas where we can branch out and kind of become more of the community and bring that information back.
So are we going to pick the public utilities you said was the other vice chair we don't have?
Yes, and in that case, we have three aldermen who have the same seniority. Sarah Vogel singer, Georgia Ayazi, and Leah Lehman. And so I don't know if we should decide that tonight since Sarah isn't here or if the three of you wanted to have an offline conversation about whether one of you is, wants to take that or if the three of you would like to come up with what you think would be a fair way, footrace, whatever.
Heart muscle.
Discussing that, if we're going to have another discussion about changing what we're doing anyway, so.
Just wait?
Yeah. I would say just wait.
Okay. So Jennifer for city services, and then we will just leave the other position vacant until we've got, if we have two vacant positions, then we will take a look with fresh eyes at it.
Get back to the agenda. Item 18 is project status.
Okay, as promised, I wanted to let city council know that we followed up on the two items that you had given direction to staff about with regard to Skyline Drive. And the first was to have the police chief reach out to the King County Sheriff and ascertain his opinion as to whether that roadway should be connected. And Chief Maza did have an opportunity to have a conversation with Sheriff Hane. And Sheriff Hane did say that as the sheriff, he is opposed to connecting the road for vehicular traffic due to the lack of streetlights, curbs and sidewalks in the Geneva Township area. The other direction was for me to have a conversation with the Geneva Highway Commissioner. And the Geneva Highway Commissioner said that he would have three recommendations based on listening to the discussion that our city council had on May 14th. First, he would request that we withdraw our annexation of that portion of road that we had annexed in order to make the connection. The second would be that the city of Batavia connect the road for emergency vehicles only and replace- the city of Batavia connect the road for emergency vehicles only, and replace the existing gate with a new gate that would have some type of way for police and fire, should they need that emergency access, to be able to break through and open that gate for that purpose. His third request was to extend the sidewalk from the Batavia side over to the road on the other side, because there is no sidewalk on their side to attach to. And that extended sidewalk, which would be on likely the west side of that road, would facilitate pedestrians and bicyclists being able to move in between these two areas. And Scott, you're here to, do you want to just talk about the pros and cons of withdrawing that annexation?
Well, so far, you know, our position has been with the annexation, that we feel that it is legal. The Circuit Court has said that it's legal. We don't think that, the township is looking to appeal it to the appellate court. They're citing certain legal issues, but I think we have a very strong argument that, you know, our annexation was in fact legal and should stay. It does allow us to have the control, whether it is the situation of putting in emergency access and/or pedestrian access. We think that that still gives us a couple of control over that, over that roadway. Even if we do come to an agreement to say we will not do the physical road connection, it still allows us to have that control over that.
I just would like to offer up for alderpeople to kind of take a look at Wintergreen Terrace. That's in my ward. That is a section that has sidewalks on both sides, and then goes to no sidewalks. And it's also on a very curvy area. There are trees in the way, but it's used by many, many pedestrians. It's also an area where students walk to a bus stop up at the park area. So I see this, this area that I walk pretty much daily, very similar to this location, and the concerns with that. So I know that I had asked for an example, and as I was walking, I was like, Wintergreen Terrace. So, you know, if anybody is kind of looking to see how that connection works, I invite you to come out and take a look at it and see how it is. And there are, people drive down there. I drive down there just so I can drive past Chris's house for gas.
I also walk Wintergreen Terrace with dogs all the time, and I haven't had a problem personally.
And thank you for going by the house, making sure everything's okay.
Looking out for my neighbors.
So, Wintergreen Terrace, we, long, long time ago, like about 12 years ago, we applied for Safe Route to School grant, and we did get it. But that project didn't proceed forward, because it's not only the trees, the slopes of the driveways are so much that you cannot put in a sidewalk with 2% or pretty much flat, and then have cars bottom out. So it's nearly, it's nearly impossible without making a lot of residents angry. So.
I'm not blaming the city for doing it. I'm just, it's very unique, it's very similar to, to this location that we're speaking about. Very, very similar.
I just wanted to give you the context why we never put sidewalk in Wintergreen Terrace. I mean, that has come up so many times, and we have looked at it, and there is no way, we can do it, but we have to go pretty high up in residency yard. Then you can break it, but the cars will still come up and then bottom flat and out, and then they have to go up again. So.
There's an even closer example of Spring Green Way. I mean, Spring Green Way has sidewalks on both sides in the city, and it transitions to the township section where there are no sidewalks. It's just down the street from this location. Right. And to me, we have these pockets all over the city that are like that, depending on when they were developed. And they, pretty much for the most part, have all been connected. No secret, I am no fan of gates. If I had my way, that one would be cut up and scrapped already in Aurora, and we wouldn't even be discussing it. And the, in my mind, to connect this pedestrian or bike wise, and just let them go back there onto the roads that have no sidewalks, I grew up out there. I know what it's like to go from sidewalks to no sidewalks. I see it all the time, walking my dogs, going out anywhere around me that doesn't have sidewalks. I've got finally, I think only one township lot behind me, and there's no sidewalks anywhere in there. It's something that you have to pay attention to. People do drive too fast. My street is a cut through all the time. It's two kids that like to try to see who can get to Walnut Street first. And I can tell which one's going which way just by the sound of the car. So the reality to me is, this was planned when that development was built to the north. It was actually planned when they built Spring Green to start with. I mean, I've been around long enough that I actually know most of those houses, the original owners out there. And it is amazing to me how we've been around this so much. I mean, this goes back to the 20-plus years I've been on the council. This should have been done long ago. And I don't think that we need to give up on the connectivity that it brings, and the ability to not ignore what was designed into those two neighborhoods. Mark?
The only thing on that is I kind of look at it as filling in donut holes, where if it's in the middle of the city, we want to fill in that donut hole. And I look at this, is that this is on the edge. And it's not providing something within the middle of the city that's like, oh my gosh, the connectivity in the middle of the city is all messed up, because we have this gap. I look at it, that this is on the periphery of the city, and not really creating a huge benefit for anybody, as it would if it was closer to town. So that's why I would say, it just, it's not worth the money we're going to spend on it.
I'll disagree. If I lived in that neighborhood, and I had to drive a mile and a half around to get to my doctor's office every time, I would want it changed.
But everybody over there says they don't. I mean, you're saying if you did, sure, you'd want that, and you'd be the 20% that would not sign the petition. And that's the way it is. I mean, so, but when 80% say, we're okay with it, and if we want to encourage walking to go over to the doctor, then don't put a road in, so that people decide that they're going to walk instead of drive through the neighborhood. But.
I think I was one of the ones who requested that, you know, you go ask those questions and have Chief Maza talk to Sheriff Hane. And, you know, the feedback that we received was that it was not recommended. So I'll be taking that into consideration, and probably will continue to vote no to opening Skyline Drive. So, just because there is a lot of big voices in Geneva and with the sheriff. And, and kind of to Mark's point, this is just on the edge of Batavia, it's not in the center, and it doesn't provide any great benefit in this case for us. So.
Till the next big property gets developed to the west of that, now that there's a light at Fabian and Wenmouth, or will be a light.
And then there's going to be the connection that goes down Wenmouth through that stub that exists there already.
Or that subdivision's going to get pushed back through Spring Green to go to Branson to get through. So, one way or another, the traffic will get through.
Yes, the Historical Markers Committee met this past week to discuss a next round of markers. I hope that people are seeing these beautiful markers that have been installed throughout the downtown. There are 10 of them right now, and we have plans to add eight more next spring. So we'll be working on that. In communications, Lori has built a new webpage for the Batavia Downtown Plan. And she also attended the farmer's market this past weekend, where she had the opportunity to promote our Alert Batavia and Code Red, getting people to sign up, as well as promoting our Flag Day and Fourth of July events, and then also handed out some of the reusable bags that people can use, as long as people provided proof that they were Batavia residents. Chief Hanson attended the Alzheimer's and Dementia Conference for first responders last week. The police department had a very successful community outreach event, cones with a cop over at the Batavia Creamery. And that was picked up by, the Daily Herald had some really nice pictures of that event. And then the police officers also stopped by at Rock the Block Celebration at the Batavia Apartments on June 8. And then also for Special Olympics, Chief Maza, Officer Robinson, and Detective Elizabeth Webb went to Bloomington, Illinois on June 7 for the Special Olympics Summer Games. And our contractor's going to commence work on the Carriage Crest Basin project in early July. And roadwork is continuing on South Water Street. It's anticipated that the final paving will take place prior to the end of June, which will be great. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Laura?
Thank you.
Any others tonight? Mark?
Just really quickly, just to, we always talk about everybody cutting through on South Water. Last night, after I was, or when I was driving up first, I saw two bikes that were coming around 31 and going down there. So people do follow it, follow the detours. But I just thought it was funny, because all we talk about is people crashing in the stones. But I actually saw people following the detour.
All right.
I actually saw somebody stop and look at the sign on Main Street and 31, and actually turn around and go back. I was quite impressed. Andy?
I feel bad that I haven't actually done this on my bike, but I was at the quarry, and I was going homes. And I was looking for, like, okay, at the quarry and Union, bikes are supposed to go up Union and detour around there. But there's no signage there that says anything that they're not supposed to keep going. So that was, I was surprised. And I was in my car, so I was going faster than I would on a bike.
But you say quarry and Union are down by like Pamarko Drive?
Yeah. So if I was there, I probably would have kept going straight.
We learn when we go out there.
Would the only place they could go is up Union Street, though, because they can't use Pamarko Drive?
I mean, I could, I'm not sure. I guess it turned around eventually, but.
We can, we'll look at it, and if there are detour signs, that needs to be posted.
Yeah.
We can have that posted.
Any other others?
All right.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.